Everybody, please rise for the salute of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Hoey?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Mayor Samaras?
Present.
Seven present.
All right. Good evening, everybody. The first order of business is a spotlight of excellence on the summer mathematics program. Madam Superintendent, would you please explain this?
Thank you. A second school committee meeting in a row that has our wonderful students highlighted. I'm so excited to have all of our students and their family members here, and we want to congratulate all of you for participating in this very important event. And I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Desmond to start the proceedings.
Thank you. We are going to ask our students to come forward. Jeff Guazdar, our Coordinator of Mathematics, is leading the way here. And when we call each student's name, Mr. McCosker will hand them a certificate of participation for their summer work that they completed and a gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble. And then each student will have the opportunity to shake the hand of Superintendent Durkin and Mayor Samaras. From the Bailey School? Natalia Antonelli? Jacob Thomas? Analia Triv? From the Bartlett School? Michaela McGovern? Anna Emma Opuko? Kevin Ramirez? From the Butler School? Visi Ukh? Richmond Porceng? Julian Rios? From the Daley School? Emmett Logan? Hayley Chow? Vu Vai? From the Lincoln School? King Feng Deep? From the Greenhouse School? Madison Ellsworth? Jester Lay? Dira Sha? From the Lincoln School? Alex Pulami Mangar? Victor Pyrez? From the McCalliv School? Annabella Ambrosio? John Alawewala? Kai Manny Menzies Smith? From the McAvene School? Nishma Dahal? Kaylee Shirley? Lucas Borba Sierra? From the Moody School? Ava Geraldo? Dalo Monsalv? Diana Namet T B? From the Moore School? Hunter Jones? Anita Sin? Kayla Sun? From the Merklin School? Sophia Lee? Mia Ponse? Xavier Santiago? From the Batucketville? Devin Dureval? Alexander Curia? Gianna Santana? From the Pinearts? Yasmin Braga? Nirmine El Malichi? Justin Ridzon? From the Riley School? Melissa Chavez? Delaney Hunt? Savannah Marangiu? From the Robinson School? Luisa Fernanda Coroz?
Kiroz? Is it Kiroz? Yeah, I got it.
Jaslyn Santiago? Lily Sofpan? From the Shaughnessy School? Jacob Kim Soto? Jovan Pola? Letizia Silva? From the STEM Academy at the Rogers School? Kimberly Bravo Lopez? Angelis Sintron? Henry Simwanji? From the Stocklosa School? Brady Bond? Kayla Lucian? Adriana Van? From the Sullivan School?
Do we have Sullivan?
Jack Stein? Keller Tyler Widdin? Isabel Farden? From the Wang School? Taylina Aliande? Catherine Dunphy? Jonathan Gonzalez? From the Washington School? Dival Asante? Victoria Sopal? Tesman Soi? If we could just give all of our Summer Math Award winners a round of applause. And we're just going to have all the students kind of gather at the beginning here with our mayor, superintendent, and school committee members so that families can take a photo. Thank you.
Can I go up, huh?
I know. I brought in something special, okay? It's going to take only two hours. Listen.
Feels nice. I think all the people in here didn't help me at all. Connie, I'm glad you see it that way because it makes it easier. I'm glad you see it that way. Hey, I'm okay now. Can we eject Connie from the room?
I was thinking of doing that.
Connie, he's ejected.
No, no, me. Oops. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, it's fine.
I think when you see programs like this, you know this gives you the reason why you ran for office. It's just wonderful what we have. Ms. Desmond, do you have any comments regarding this program?
Thank you. I just wanted to point out that our students were honored tonight because they took the initiative over the summer to complete their summer math packets, maintain copies of activities that were relative to the math that they were learning over the summer and the standards for their grade levels, and present that work to their teachers at the beginning of the school year. I do want to just thank all of our families, our parents, guardians, teachers, caretakers, principals, everyone who's involved in these efforts. Jeff Guazdar, our Coordinator of Mathematics, and the committee for allowing us to do this work with our students and then to celebrate the work that they complete. So, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, next, we have the approval of the minutes. I need a motion to accept and place and file the October 3 minutes of the Lowell School Committee meeting. I need a motion to accept. I can't, Councilor? Okay. Yeah, Councilor Nutter? And Councilor, I'm sorry, and School Committee Man Dakota. Thank you. I started at the wrong meeting. All right, next, we have permission to enter. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. These are three items for your consideration. Two of them are grant-funded. One is special education transportation.
Move to approve?
Okay. A motion to approve by School Committee Man? School Committee President Martin and Mr. Dakota. Thank you.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay, I'm back on earth now. Next, we have memorials. First memorial is for Thomas Abney Lowell High School Security Guard. Next memorial is for Timothy Kofagasus, grandfather Moore School teacher, Cassandra Flohr. And then we have Gloria Leahy, mother of John Leahy, city council member and former school committee member. Mother of Kathleen Ramirez, Greenhouse School teacher. Aunt Elizabeth McKinnon, Abyssy Adult Education Center Director. Aunt of Mary Jeffroy, Lowell High Clerk. And grandmother of Amanda Leahy, Robinson School tutor. Please dock in the chamber. Thank you. Next, we have reports of the superintendent. The first report is the Summer School 2018 Summary Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. I'd ask Acting Assistant Superintendent Mr. McCosker to please share with you highlights of the Summer School report.
Good evening. Before you, you have a three-page document which summarizes our Summer School activities, which was a combination of 21st Century and other programs we run in the district and with a number of community partners. We were able to service over 1,200 students in the summer of 2018. Programs went from June 27th, basically almost a day after we get out of school, until August 7th. Students were fed breakfast and lunch. A number of our programs and schools' partners with the Lowell Recreation Department, which ran programs in our gymnasiums that went till 3 o'clock and accommodated parents' childcare needs. Our IDEA Camp was... Where funding wasn't available this year. I think Matt Stahl at the Wang School did a great job of pooling resources with people from the curriculum department and were able to offer two-week summer camp, STEM camps, which actually were quite popular for grades four through eight. Thank you.
Any comments? Thank you. Next, we have the Abyssy Adult Education Center, International Institute Lowell CNA Program. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. This is just information regarding a grant award that the Lowell Adult Education Program received recently in collaboration with the International Institute. They were awarded Certified Nursing Assistant Success Program Grant, which is a competitive grant. And this grant is going to afford them to duly educate students in English language instruction as well as providing them 100 hours of certified nursing aid training to prepare them for the successful completion of the Red Cross exam to earn their Certified Nurses Aid credential. So, it's kind of exciting for our students, adult learners.
Thank you. Next, we have a response to Mr. Dakota's motion of 6/2018 regarding video clips.
Yes, we addressed this at the last school committee meeting. However, we were having some challenges with the first video clip. And so, I just wanted to share that video clip today and just to share with you the context of it. So, 10 days before school started, I challenged our school principals. One of the themes of our summer leadership was, "What's Your Story?" And our story is told through many different lenses. It's told through the teachers who teach our children every day, through our students' stories that are so powerful and our great city that we live in. But it's also told in how we prepare our schools for our students and for our staff. So, I gave them a 10-day challenge to send me clips of how they were preparing their school for students. So, here we go.
All set. All right, thank you. Next we have the Coordinated Program Review Action Plan. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. At the previous school committee, we had shared that the results of our coordinated program review, we were quite pleased with the outcome from six years ago. The indicators that we needed to address were minimized quite a bit. So at that time, there was a request for additional information from Mr. Nutter to have us present some of the key concepts that we presented to the state. I'm pleased to let you know that we heard from the state today, and our action plans have been accepted and approved, and so we have one year to address them. I can turn it over to Ms. Desmond, and she can give you a quick review, but we also have a number of the people here who were instrumental in putting the action plan together. Ms. Bastid from the high school, Gemma Crystal and Donna Maluccio from Special Education and Palace from the ELL program. So if you have any questions, they'd be happy to answer those for you as well.
Thank you. Just to explain quickly as a review from our meeting of a few weeks ago when this came up, the coordinated program review is, it's a part of the Department of Ed's Accountability System where they oversee local compliance with education requirements throughout, through the coordinated program review throughout the state. So all school systems are reviewed at different times. So this past year Lowell was to be reviewed. We had been reviewed back in 2012, and it, the review typically occurs every six years. They look at the areas of special education, civil rights, methods of administration, and other general education requirements, English language education, and college and career and technical education. We only offer college, career, and technical education in a limited form at Lowell High School. So Lowell High School had a portion of their programming, which included marketing, hospitality, restaurant services, et cetera. So during the process, we had to provide lots of documentation of what we do, what our policies are, some of our procedures and our, and some of our student records for review, as well as interviews with teachers and administrators. Then we received a partial plan in the spring where we got to, you know, clarify any questions that they may have had of the process, and then we received a final report of findings on September 4th. And so just as a quick review, we had in the area of civil rights, 26 areas that, I'm sorry, 12 areas that were cited in 2012, and in 2018, we had three areas. So we decreased the areas that were cited significantly. In civil rights, there were actually, there were 28 total indicators. We met 25. We had one that was partially met and two that needed to be completely addressed. In the area of special education, in 2012, we had 26 areas that were cited. This year, they were, out of the 59 total indicators, 56 of them were met, and we had three that were identified as partially met, and there were no indicators that were considered unaddressed. In 2012, the ELL department had 13 areas that were cited in 2012, and this year, we had, out of 15 indicators, 12 met and three partially met. No indicators that were not met. And then the college, career, and technical education, there were 25 indicators total, 13 were met, seven were partially met, one was not met. And then there were 14 that, I'm sorry, four that are non-applicable because we don't offer the programmings that they evaluate, the program that they evaluate. So that's a quick review. Your packet details the items that were either partially met or not met, and how we plan to address them moving forward this year. And as Superintendent Durkin stated, we just heard from the state today that our action plan was acceptable, and we will move forward with the action plan to correct those few items that need to be addressed. And if there are any questions in any of the areas, we do have the representatives that worked on those areas here to answer any questions.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I don't have any specific questions in the specific areas, but in terms of the response from the state, are there any of our, do any of our action plans extend beyond this school year? Is the plan that we'd be able to address all of these deficiencies by the end of this year, or were there any that stretch out beyond that?
The expectation is that they would be completed within the year.
Okay.
And some of them would last well beyond that because those are, they're areas that obviously we need to address and maintain.
No, that makes sense. It's just, it's such an odd schedule to go six years, like to come back and make a comparison to six years ago. It's such a long period for an audit, but, I'm sorry.
Can I also just mention that there are several areas that we addressed between the time the state had done interviews and the time that we had to submit our response?
Okay.
So, for example, there is a few areas around categorizing students in the L's department that we just had to change a practice, and so we implemented that right away.
Right away.
So there's some that are actually, what I would say, completed already.
Okay.
And I believe that the Special Education Department will be evaluated every three years now. So that's new, and I don't know if Ms. McChrystal wanted to say anything about that, but that's a change.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you. I don't, I'm starting, not pertaining exactly to this, but I meant to commend Mrs. Bastid about the program of having the seniors go to their schools in their caps and gowns, which I think is a fabulous thing. I meant to congratulate, I think that's a great program. The kids get so excited and they're so proud of themselves when they go to their old schools. I think it's a great program. Just, I wanted to say that. Get that.
Thank you. Any further discussion, Madam? Ms. Doherty?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I thought it was going to...
No, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you. I'm not sure where this falls in the parameter, but I was very interested in the cultural proficiency piece. That's on page 12 in your report, because, you know, we've had this longstanding challenge of the demographics of our staff and administrators don't match the demographics of our students. So it was interesting to see that, if I understand, Desi, you know, looking at having us take a closer look at the educational materials that we use to make sure they better reflect the students that we're teaching. So I just had a, I'm really pleased to see this. It seems like a very comprehensive approach that's really focusing on the professional development. So I just, I wonder if you could just, and I don't know if there's someone in back who could speak to this too. When you talk about the professional development for the leaders, it seems like there's two pieces that, so we have Mr. Rosa from Desi is going to come in and provide professional training to our leaders, then our leaders are going to go back into their respective schools, but then, number three, you mentioned an entire district staff on Election Day, which is great, because schools will be closed. So what is that going to look like? Is that going to be in one place or at each school? How do you, I want to see how those pieces fit.
So we had a team. Superintendent Durkin had members of Student Support Services and members of the Curriculum Office. Palace was one of the members. And our Director of Accountability, they went to training during the summer that has also extended into the fall in a train-the-trainer model. And so what we're doing is with that expertise and the presenter who actually presented in the summer for the state, we are crafting a leadership for, next week, in fact, she will come and train all the leaders in this same session that our team went to this summer on cultural competency. And then the last portion of that leadership, we will, as a team, develop the professional development that we will be providing to the staff in November so that it will be the same. So it's really a train-the-trainer model. And then we will also be implementing that training during the summer through our LTA. So anyone who's hired new will continually get that training. So we will not be in the situation where we do it once and then we miss new hires. So that's the plan. And it would be for all material, many educators have to look for some other resources to support the learning. The curriculum that we select is already researched-based curriculum that looks at cultural competencies of the materials. But if educators were to seek out other sources, internet sources and so forth, to help diversify what they're doing in the classroom or to help students make meaning, we want to ensure that what they're selecting is also free from bias. So that's part of the professional learning.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Howie?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. There's one thing that I see here, because Dominic's always asking about translating things. I see on page, I think it's page four, legal standards anyways, it says, "Student record review and staff interviews indicate that not all important special education documents, such as IEPs, notices, and assessment summaries, are translated into the primary language of the home." I think that's something we have to look at. Dominic is, keep hitting that issue about communicating with all people. I think it's very hard even for people that speak English when they go in and talk about special education with the pros, and they go away frustrated because sometimes, and I know it happened to my family, you're told you need a one-on-one para, but then you find out they're giving your kid a volunteer, which I know money's tight and you can't do everything in special ed, but I think this whole summary, and I haven't read the whole thing, but it looks like we need a few special education meetings, and we need them soon. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, thank you. Next we have revised report cards for the kindergarten through grade four. Madam Superintendent?
Sorry, I was thanking the staff for attending. I apologize.
That's okay.
The, I would ask, Ms. Desmond, this is a follow-up to the report card, report that Ms. Desmond provided at the last school committee meeting, and there was a request to share the elementary report card. Ms. Desmond, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
So this was, again, a follow-up to the request, I believe, of Mr. Dakota to be able to see them before they go home with the families. So again, the first distribution is the first week of December for elementary, so we're still, we have plenty of time. I do want to point out that, again, this was done with, with an extensive process starting in January and completing somewhere in May. We had teachers from every school representing every grade, going back to staff at the schools to get feedback, and I'm very excited to point out that we have a significant amount of science standards that are directly connected to the learning that goes on at the grade levels, and that, I think, is one of the most exciting parts to me because we had one area for grading in science before this revision. So again, we wanted to try to be as closely aligned to the standards and as closely aligned to the materials and the curriculum that are being taught during the school year in the specific grade levels.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for this information. I think it's great. I know it can be very complicated doing that kind of crosswalk process from when the standards made that shift, and I think this is great information for us to have. I know in the past, and this may be a few years ago now, we had done some materials for parents to help them better understand the standards-based. I think for most of our, well, maybe many of our parents, they're more comfortable with this, with this process now, but I still think it might be helpful, especially in those elementary grades. Whether it's, you know, a one-page flyer, I think in the past we might have even done a video of how to, how to read your child's report card and understand what it's really telling you. If we have until December, if we could perhaps investigate a way, oh, look at you. Okay, you can answer my question then.
So that's exactly what we're doing. We're doing the ITCs, the Instructional Technology Coordinators. They have gotten these documents as well, and so they're creating videos. We hope to put them in the curriculum area on our website. We also will send home the letters that describe the scales and what they mean on the day that the report cards are distributed. They will be, we have been doing that right along, so it started when the report cards first went out, and we just continually update that letter, and that goes home on the first distribution of the standards-based report card. So it will, that letter will be updated to be reflective of the scales here as well. But the technology is definitely something that's underway right now, and it's exciting because I think that's, that's much easier for many people to have a visual depiction of what the letter means.
Well, I think that's excellent news. I'm very pleased to hear it. A big night for curriculum tonight. What a, what a great opportunity to talk about curriculum at a school committee meeting in such detail, so I appreciate all the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to commend, because I know how much work goes into that, having been on a team that did this, did a project similar, not, not as intense as this one. So I know how much work it was to do that, and so I commend your team as to what you did, and a job well done. Thank you.
And I do want to point out that it's a team. It was the curriculum coordinators, our STEM District Support Specialist, our Research Testing Coordinator, and so many teachers. We had great teacher participation. The Curriculum Professional Development Office, the PD room was full every time we met. So it's a lot of, a lot of people's hard work. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about it.
Very much aware, and thank you again. All set. Any other discussion? All right, next we have enrollment figures. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is just your weekly enrollment figures.
Mr. Nutter?
I happen to notice that since like the middle of September, we've lost a couple of hundred students. Is that normally what happens during this time of year?
That is. So that, at the start of the school year, our students are all listed as enrolled in, between the time that parents enroll their children and school starts. We have a number of families that move out of Lowell, are changed locations, so, and then also, we, we actually really push our staff to, so that we can have really accurate numbers in our classrooms, to really reconcile their, their numbers. So this is a normal.
Mr. Howie?
Yeah, just have one question. I'm looking at the Bridge program, and the number's 37. Is that school maxed out at 50? Is that the number for that school? Does anybody know that? I know it's an important school, that's for sure.
Yeah, so there were going to be 10 additional spots for students there, and we're, we're waiting to see how the budget works to identify and be able to hire those additional staff.
Thank you. Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little side chat, Superintendent, through you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Is the number of students per class, is it 30 or is it, do we have a flexible number? A little bit side, but, I mean, off the topic, but... A little bit side, but, I mean, off the topic, but it's okay.
I'm trying to think of what our, what our elementary and our middle levels are. Is it 24? And then I think we go up at the 29? Yeah, so 24 at our elementary, 29 middle.
Middle and high school.
And high school, high school, we don't have necessarily a cap on that end. It's more of, we don't hold a class that has less than 10 students.
So if some teachers have 31, 32, that's normal, or 30, that's normal.
There are times that we do have some classes that are at that range.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
All set?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I need a motion to accept this report from the superintendent, 7-1 through 7-6, as a report of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All in favor? Thank you. Next, we have home education. That's been deferred to 11-7. Next, we have new business vote to accept the grant award of $3,000 for bridge program from the Stevens Foundation. Madam Superintendent, do you want to?
Yes, thank you. This is the 16th year that the bridge program has received this grant, and the grant funds are used for after-school programs, open houses and alumni events. So we hope that you'll vote to accept this donation and perhaps send a letter of acknowledgement to the Stevens Foundation.
Motion to accept by Mr. Doherty, Dakota, and seconded by Mr. Hoi. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay. Next, we have votes to change the approved budget for fiscal '19 budget. The district actually is making changes as we continue to review the budget, and we're working towards this bottom-line figure. So we're going to go through each category that's been changed. We have a speaker. Do we have a speaker that wants to? Sadia, please give your name and your address.
My name is Chin Long. I'm a senior at Lowell High and class of 2019. I know that there's a huge budget deflection. I have looked over the weekend and listened to what you said on Monday, but we need libraries back because all the work is piled up onto our old librarian, and it's a busy library, and she has to do a lot of work, especially like managing the mobile technology, AKA the iPad carts and laptops, and doing, teaching others classes such as research skills and junior years, and I really think there needs to be more support to it because it's really too much work for it, and I hope there is some way to fund the libraries, Mr. Samaras, back, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Sadia. Thank you for the words. That will be taken into consideration. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go through categories 1200, Superintendent. The original approval was for $853,276. I need a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the new bottom-line figure of $890,290.
I'm a little lost, what are we doing?
Any discussion? I need a motion.
I'm a little lost. Where are we starting?
We're at the 8-2, and this is on, starts with page two. Go to 8-2, vote on changes for the approved budget. Okay. Ms. Turner, do you want to explain that?
On the motion, they're referring to page two in the binder book. So that's under tab 1200, and the change for this motion is to add the $36,000 for the interim salary.
Madam Superintendent.
I just wanted to, okay.
It's the tab 1200, page two, in the new binder book.
And also, I just wanted to let the committee know that because we are still in conversation with the unions and looking at trying to reconfigure staffing, we've had some conversations with staff already, but what we are presenting to you tonight for consideration are just those items that we really need to have the funding for immediately in the account, and that is a total of $154,933. So that, we definitely have that money available to us with the additional Chapter 78, the hurricane relief and the emergency relief. But we will come back to you with the additional cuts once we can actually balance the budget.
Ms. Nutter, you have a question?
I have a question, thank you. I just, did you find out if Amorak is paying rent? Did you find that out? I know it's minor, but...
No, I don't believe Amorak, Aramak is paying rent.
They have been paying rent in our building, I believe. And this year, they're not paying rent?
No, it's in our kitchen.
Well, then I ask why they're not paying rent. They should be paying some type of rent, I believe.
I'll look into that. I'll look into it if that's...
Thank you, thanks. That's all I have.
Would you like me to summarize the four items before you go on to the motion?
Yeah.
The four items that we plan on asking for approval with tonight would be the interim salary, that's on page two, under...
Excuse me, why don't we go just take each approval, okay?
Okay.
Just as it's written down. So for the superintendent's page and the change to $890,290, I need a motion to accept by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Ms. Doherty. All in favor? Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
No.
Ms. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, approved.
All right. Next, we have non-personnel. Ms. Turner, do you want to?
Okay, the next item is under function code 1400. It is page four, and it's $75,000, which is a combination of the $50,000 increase to the photocopier account and the audit account.
Any questions? All right, I need a motion to accept the recommendation by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Nutter. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
No.
Ms. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Four yeas, three nays, approved.
Next is regular education, non-personnel. Ms. Turner.
Regular Ed non-personnel is on page nine, under the 2300, regular Ed non-personnel section, and it's a $13,000 increase for supplies for the Cardinal Early Childhood Center.
Any questions? All right, Ms. Superintendent.
I just wanted to let you know that that was not built into the budget. Every school gets a certain allocation, so this is just being equitable to the Cardinal.
Need a motion to accept the recommendation by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call.
Mr. Dakota?
No.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
No. Why do they laugh?
Ms. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Four yeas, three nays, approved.
All right, the next is non-personnel.
The next item is on page 21, which is under DOE function code 4000. We're asking that you approve the $30,000 increase to telephone. Our account is in the negative, and we have been contacted twice by City Hall to address this issue. So if we can just have $30,000 temporarily.
Ms. Doherty.
I think, Your Honor, through you, I just would like to ask a clarifying question so that if we don't approve this adjustment, we don't have money to pay for our phone bill. Is that correct?
Correct. It's in the negative already, so...
Okay, thank you. I would also make a motion to approve the recommendation.
Ms. Doherty, seconded by...
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
How has this been approached in the past that doesn't, isn't it part of the city's responsibility to pay that?
No, in the past, if, I think it's in your packet, I put the telephone account history. We always budgeted, I believe it's $185,000. It was cut down to 70 and now to 20. That's not enough to cover the phone bill. E-rate, because of the Modernization Act, E-rate no longer goes to us through a credit. We have to budget at the full amount and request it from the city if they so choose to give it to us. We did not budget the account with the telephone bill in mind. We only budgeted $20,000. We need $175,000, I believe. Right now, it's in the negative.
You all set?
Thank you.
Mr. Lay?
So, thank you, Mayor. So when we did the budget in May, what was, what was the amount back then?
Telephone was approved. You did 145, but you offset it with $125,000 offset that we don't have access to, which is E-rate. E-rate goes to the city, not to the school department. It's a state regulation.
Isn't E-rate from 2017 given to us after the previous budget? So if we look at, look at our account right now, that E-rate that was given to us last year, that whole amount should be in there, 125,000?
No, unfortunately not. All of our revolving funds are gone. And as far as the E-rate, we have to budget for the full amount, and then the city, we have to request it through a formal process. This is a regulation that we have to follow.
This is what I expect to see, E-rate of 125,000 from previous year, and this year we should have another 125, so a total should be at least 250,000 by then, for this year. So I don't know what happened to the account, to the money.
Do you want to explain that again?
In previous years, E-rate was given to us by a credit balance in our telephone accounts. The Verizon would give us a credit. We have, the regulations have changed. We have to budget the full amount in our budget, and then when the E-rate funds come in, they don't go to the school department, they go through the city's general fund, and it flows through their free cash, and we have to request the funds from them. I spoke to the government yesterday, the statutes, I can print them out and bring them with me next time, they're not obligated to give those funds to us. They're not obligated to give the Medicaid reimbursements to us. We have to work with them and negotiate.
From the city?
Mm-hmm.
Right, understood. But what I expected was that last year, we still have a balance of $125,000 available.
They used it.
So if it is gone, I don't know, how could that be used? Because we never used it.
That was part of, you know, when I said that we had $5.1 million in revolving fund balances in 2016, and now there's nothing left? That's one of the examples. We used the E-rate funds already, so we don't have any E-rate funds. The only thing we can do for this current year would be to request the amount from the city after they certify their free cash.
Right.
Yeah.
And definitely, I mean, more likely, we will get it.
No, not necessarily.
Has they ever been saying no? I mean, has...
No, it's, the process has changed somewhat, so she has to adhere to the new process, Mr. Lay, and we can make that request. But till we make that request, until the city makes a decision as to whether it comes back to us.
Right, so I, anyway, for me, I expect $125,000 in the account from last year, plus guaranteed on 125.
But it's not there. It's not there.
So, at least we have, yeah. Anyway, that's...
Ms. Martin.
So if I could, just expectations aside, the 125,000 that was paid to us last year was used to pay our phone bill last year.
Mm-hmm.
Right, okay, so that 125,000 was spent on exactly what it was supposed to be spent on, our phone bill. There was a change, which changed the way this happened, not just for us, but across the state.
Mm-hmm.
So that necessitates us changing our, the way we budget. So could you tell me when the news came down that that had changed? Was that yesterday?
No.
Okay, so that was prior to when this budget was created?
So during my year, my budget and process in past years, and the last couple of years, we were always told to budget at the full amount because you don't know if you're going to get E-rate. It's a gamble. So we always budget at the full amount. When we would receive the E-rate, it would offset our expenses, and then we would reallocate the available funds at that time. With the city, now the regulations have changed where the money is no longer given to us through a credit with the phone company, it's given to the city, and the city, it flows through. So during the budget and process, they would have been aware that they should budget at the full amount. Based on my conversations with the city CFO and auditor, they said that there were many conversations between the school administration and the city administration, and it was explained at that time that they have to budget. Even if, even if the city decided to give us the money, we still would have had to put it in here on our budget, not as an offset.
So they were instructed that this was the, in the correct business practice, to actually show in the budget what the actual expense would be, and the decision was made not to do it that way, instead to put $25,000 in this account?
Based on, based on the conversations with the city CFO, I also want to point out that when you asked about the budget, it's 145 with 125 as an offset, so 20,000 was going to be on our general fund. That still isn't sufficient. We needed a $30,000 increase. And as we just mentioned the other day, we do have potential savings coming for a phone, a phone system implementation, but unfortunately, it's staggered, and because it's staggered, we're not guaranteed those savings, and it was already delayed. So we won't know or we won't see those savings right away, and that's why I'm asking for a $30,000 amount just to get us through two months. We're in the hole, and they, I mean, the city hall has emailed me twice. They don't, they don't know what to do. Their accounts are in the negative.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoi.
Thanks for saying that, because I know the city's broke, and that's why they're trying to pull the schools under their control. But since the 90s, we always been reimbursed for telephone and internet, and the day, a couple of years ago, when Gary Fish was here, it just stopped. Why, I don't have those answers. But I believe the 125 should have been left in the account, or it was in the account, but this is the first I'm hearing that, so that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Nutter.
Go ahead, Ms. Turner. She was the first.
Can I offer that I can get the history of E-rate for you and show that one, one consideration is that they have done, we once had an 80% reimbursement for wireless telephone, and then it went down to 60 and 40. So we were told years ago that it was going to be phased out for certain things. And so we are seeing less and less of an E-rate reimbursement because of that natural phase out, but I can actually get a printout for you from the government showing the history of the E-rate, and I can also get a copy of the act that tells us that it has to flow through the city. Of course, we agree with you. We would love to see the money in our account. That would be to our best. I mean, that would, it's not as though we're just allowing it to happen. The government, the statutes state that it has to do this. So, but I can get that information so it's more transparent.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nutter.
Two years ago, the Massachusetts Legislature passed what they deemed... Two years ago, the Massachusetts Legislature passed what they deemed the Mass Municipal Modernization Act. When they did that, they took things like the E-rate and the PEG money because certain communities were not using it correctly, and so it could put in as part of a package that actually helped other cities and, and communities streamline some of their purchasing and some of their accounting, but it came with a price, and that price, unfortunately, was to the schools, and that took away that direct money that we used to get in both the E-rate and the, so it's not something that the city did. It had nothing to do with who the CFO was. It's a state law that was passed and negatively affected school systems throughout the state.
That is correct. Any, any further questions on that, Madam? Ms. Doherty?
It seems to me that this historical stuff and understanding the changes in E-rate, while it's important to understand and know, the issue that is before us is that we do not have the funds to pay for our telephone system. We are a school district. We must have working phones. So, again, I would offer my motion to, to accept the recommendation to fund this line item.
A second, by Mr. Nutter. All in favor? We'll have a roll call. Sorry.
Mr. DeCoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
No.
Ms. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Five yeas, two nays, approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Through you to the Superintendent. You're speaking with all of the unions, that would be the administrators, the clerical, and the UTL, correct?
That is correct. I'm hoping to have a meeting with them. We are putting our request in writing, and they should receive that tomorrow, but we have had communication back and forth.
All right. You all set?
Thank you.
All right, next, we have convention conference requests. One for a trip to Washington, DC for the Wayne School Conference Pittsburgh for, I'm just trying to think of who this is for. The day school and a trip to, conference to Texas and a trip for Lowell High students. I just need a motion to take and approve all four by Mr. DeCoto, seconded by Ms. Nutter. Roll call.
Mr. DeCoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Next, we have professional personnel, UTL sick leave. Member of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate fifteen sick days to Patricia Jusson Butler School Teacher. Need a motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. DeCoto. Roll call.
Mr. DeCoto?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Ms. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Need a motion to adjourn? So moved, moved by Mr. Hoi and seconded by Ms. Doherty. Thank you.
Wow, that's a record.